I move that we approve an agreement between Cedar Springs Fire Department and National Hose Testing Testing Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $2,252.
Second?
There's a move in second then. Chief Fraser?
There's a typo. It says 2252. It's supposed to be 2352 according to the quote.
What you're saying is something like...
Not a big deal, but the median age of the fire department is getting a little older every year, and it's getting a little harder to recruit people, and it's getting a little harder to tell somebody they have to give up a night's practice to drag hose up and down the street. As requested, we have over two miles of hose, and it takes a considerable amount of time to do that. Mr. Hall is on the fire department, former member, and he's got an idea of what we have to do to do that. And with the size of our engines and the purchasing of new hoses and stuff, we've got half again as much as what Mr. Hall was used to when we did it back then. What I'm requesting is that we contract with National Hose. They did our ladder testing earlier this year, and they come in. The only thing we have to do is supply a driver. They unload the hose, test it, market, record numbers. Anything that doesn't pass the test at that time gets taken out of service, tagged, cannot be used. And then they provide us with a hard copy of CD disc for our files, and it takes the liability away from us, the city, and the fire department if something should happen. I just, I can't see anything but a win-win situation for us, the city and the fire department for this. And it's about $1,000, $1,200 more than what we're... I averaged it out somewhere around $900, $2,000, depending on weather, climate, manpower. It may take four months, it may take five months. Kind of hard to drag hose, two miles of hose, July when it's 90 degrees. We'll let them do it.
They have their own pump equipment?
They have everything. They come in, they set up. We hosted Fire Gap out in front of the station one day, a month or so ago for Solon. They requested the use of hydrant, and Tom turned the fire chief from Solon over to me, and we worked out a plan where, seeing as Maple Street was under construction there with brewery and everything, we just shut the street down for, I think it was six hours. They did everything right there in the street. They're not dragging the hose through the mud, the grass, or anything. And it worked well.
You know, I think by having this professional crew do it, it also alleviates some liability on our people, plus not being injured from a blown hose while testing.
Well, you have the fact of a blown hose and worry you fall off a truck or something.
Exactly.
I would like to amend my motion to change the amount to $2,352 as per the National Hose Testing. Is it an amount not to exceed, correct?
An amount not to exceed.
Well, but we're okay.
We just give you 20 more bucks for donuts. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I was just curious about the amount of time that you have to spend with the men and women pulling hose up and down for those four months. Does that consume your whole meeting time?
Yeah, sure.
For four months?
Yes, sir. Well, we have two meetings a month. The one, usually the first meeting is our business meeting and updates and truck inspections and stuff. And usually the second meeting, we try to dedicate that to training, ladders, hose streams, pump practice, that type of thing.
So this is taking the place of...
This is taking place of our training.
Other things need to be taken care of.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to ask, two miles of hose, it sounds like a lot of hose. When you think of... You're running multiple hoses and locations to two different pumpers or something of that sort where you need...
There's regulations and guidelines through OSHA and NFPA as to what amount of hose you have on a truck. On three trucks, we have 3,000 feet of four-inch hose. That's a large diameter yellow hose. And that's required. That affects the amount of hose, and your gallon each affects your ISO ratings still.
It just, you know, a hose from downtown would take it well past Myers. That's my consensus.
Well, if you have a major structure fire like we've had across the street over the last 20 years, you're going to need every piece of hose and every piece of apparatus north of the river. And I mean Grand River, not Rogue. So it's, yeah, that, all that amount of hose.
Was it two years ago we had two residential building fires at the same time? The one on Fifth and Seventeen Mile, and then the one over by the post?
You've had hose in place for both. So the amount of hose is needed.
Mrs. Conley, that doesn't pop into my mind, but it's very possible two to three years ago, yes. I know there was a...
We can have more than one fire at a time.
Oh, yes. Well, we got, we got, Sam, I'll just give you a brief example. Sand Lake got toned out for, up by Wake Forest Lake tonight on a structure fire with Howard City. And in the meantime, they got toned out again for another fire on Pine Lake that they asked us to respond to. And while them tones were going on, we got toned out for a medical up in the trailer park. So North Kent County got real busy for about an hour. And it does happen. We have been on multiple calls, fire calls at the same time.
And not hearing a hoots would be a really bad thing.
It's one of them, "Ah, shucks" fire, you know? And I use the word "shucks" because you're gonna, "Ah, shucks, we're gonna be here a while."
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes?
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Let's all vote together. Motion carries.
I'd like to just add that I will get a hold of these people tomorrow and set up an appointment so we can get this done yet this summer.
But that's to take care of your folks and us. Thank you, Marty.
Okay, we got another one here for Marty, along with his standing there. Item C, motion to waive policy number 12 to act on approval of fire department truck repairs at first consideration. I entertain a motion to waive policy number 12.
Mr. Mayor, I need a motion to waive policy 12 to act on approval of fire department truck repairs at first consideration.
Moved in second then. Any discussion? Hearing no, is all in favor of waiving policy number 12, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to approve the bids from Apparatus Central Repair for repairs to fire department trucks in an amount not to exceed $2,700.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve a bid from Apparatus Central Repair for repairs to fire department trucks in an amount not to exceed $2,700. Support.
They moved in support of Mr. ... Our Chief Mr. Fraser, would you finally speak to that?
We had our annual pump testing done, which is mandated. The county wants theirs done yearly. We were trying to save a dollar or two and have it done every two years, but at... When the fire, Kent County Fire Commission put it out for bids, it came in $10 per truck, cheaper than what it was last year. So we had our two engines, along with a county engine. Engine number eight's the county truck, and they will pay for any and all repairs. Well, during this pump testing, there was a few things that come up that need attention. It doesn't interfere with the function or operations of any of the engine, but they need to be fixed. It's like a leaky muffler. It's just gonna get worse if we don't address it, take care of it now. I have a list, and I solicited for four bids. Three of them responded, and the fourth vendor stated that, he says, "I'm gonna tell you right up front, I'm gonna be high," and he says, "I really don't know, so you want me to waste my time and your time to send you a bid because I am, I am gonna be higher." So he opted not to even send a call. However, there is one bid that's $143 cheaper than Apparatus Central, but they did not figure in the exact cost of the part, because they weren't exactly sure. Apparatus Central did send me a quote for $123 for that part. Well, having said that, that $143 difference, I gotta believe that the lower quote is gonna be more than $123 for that part than the transmission. Again, does not affect the efficiency or anything, the drivability or anything of that engine. It just needs to be addressed. It's a leaky faucet, and it needs to be fixed. I would, I would like to do Apparatus, because we did business with them for several years. They did our pump testing, and they know, they were here when they did the pump testing. They know what needs to be addressed, where the other two come up and wandered around the truck, put a pad of paper, and I think one gentleman crawled underneath it, but I'm not sure because I wasn't there at the time.
Do you have more confidence in Apparatus?
I do, yes.
Any discussion, Mr. Clark?
Chief Fraser, I see under engine four from Apparatus Central, they have a question mark that says on the transmission leak.
That was the $123 that I just mentioned, yes. He wasn't sure what the part was gonna cost when he sent, and he had his wife email me that after they sent me the quote. And rather than the call and have her go through all of that quote again, I just thought I would add it as a sticky note to them.
Sticky notes work.
Any other questions? Thank you. Hearing none, I'll go for a roll call vote. Mr. Clark?
Yes?
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Nixon?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
And they're all votes, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking care of our cops.
Item D, discussion regarding amendment to the planning commission bylaws, first consideration. Mitch Hopkins was on the, was on the plan.
Yep.
Okay, him and I are both on the planning commission, and we went through line item, line item on this changes. And in the bylaws, you can see any of the red highlighted is what has been changed. And the planning commission went through this, our last meeting or a meeting prior to. And the committee went through and reviewed this. So now this has kind of come down to where the council wants. Or basically, this is a discussion regarding the amendments. Is there anybody else?
I have a question that I got from the mayor, but I can't get to the, I'm going off of emails that I've had because I can't find the thing on my agenda. It's several people contact me about being unclear as to the method of getting seen by the planning commission. And I responded, I sent an email to the city manager, and he, because at first I went look at bylaws. And the bylaws say that the city clerk makes that determination. I then went and sent an email to the city manager, and he said, "It's me that makes that decision." And I said, "Well, okay, because that's not what the bylaws say." And as far as I can tell, if I read them correctly, because I can't get the current moment, find them, that hasn't been changed. Am I correct? Is it still the city clerk?
Yes.
Okay. So to clarify, it's not the city manager that makes the agenda.
Correct. The city clerk physically does the agenda. And the city clerk and I consult on agenda items, and what agenda items will be on the agenda. And in terms of putting all the agenda together physically, that's what the clerk does. But we consult, we work together on making sure the appropriate things are on the agenda.
So would it need to stay in the bylaws if the city manager, in consultation with the city clerk, makes the agenda?
Mr. Hopkins, we discussed that, and there wasn't much discussion from the planning commission, or else they wouldn't do make that change. They just said, "The city clerk shall be responsible for maintaining and attending records for the planning commission."
I just feel like our bylaws should reflect what we do. And if you're a person coming in from the outside who hasn't done this a hundred times, and you're trying to figure out how to do this, and you're looking at the bylaws, like that should reflect that. I have not found it. It's in here. But we're agreeing that that is what it says.
Yeah. The city clerk shall be responsible for preparing an agenda for the planning commission meetings.
In order of the business, what a meeting shall be, they call up.
That's the way it is. If you want something on the agenda, you bring it to the city clerk. Even though they go over it, but you still bring it to the city clerk.
And she actually prepares the written agenda.
So if you had somebody come to you wanting to be on the agenda, and you feel you're not prepared, and you, I would think there should be some procedure where you call that person and say, you know, "This is what you need to have, can you get it to me, or let's figure it out, have some discussion."
Is there a checklist, or...
And then say, "Now you're ready." And now you have to, for just getting the date, or you're not ready, so... I don't know, I think people should get a heads up if they're not going to be allowed on an agenda. And why?
And I think if you, this is me, there needs to be a, this is our universal policy of what you need to be on the agenda. And you need it or you don't. So there can't be a, like, no one can say, "Well, you didn't put me on the agenda because you don't like me."
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead. I just wanted to ask Linda and Dad, are there other documents that are used when you're preparing or deciding on who's going to be on the agenda, or what items will be on the agenda, and saying, "Oh, this is, this is this item, and so this kind of item, therefore, this is the information." And I'm just piggybacking on what...
Right.
That somebody can look at and say, "Oh, that's what I have to have." And you can give them a sheet of paper and say, "Here's what you need. If you want to be heard and get this handled, then I'll need it."
A checklist?
A checklist.
A total checklist, but yes, and whatever. Do we have anything like that? Have we ever had anything on the agenda?
It depends on what is, what the agenda item is. Just use, just use as an example, when the CD barns, when they are going to come to the planning commission with a site plan for consideration, there is a site plan permit application that lists everything that they have to have in great detail. So every, you know, it's situational circumstantial of what is needed.
So maybe we have documents like that to permit us with that. Because I did read in here that there are some pretty clear, well, maybe that was under the PUD, actually. That's very detailed about what people have to bring to the table in order to be heard on that issue. Are there other items where this happened off? I know we're talking about the CDBT thinking they were on the agenda a couple of times, and then not being, and they didn't know it. They told that they...
Well, there was one time, and we cleared that out.
Okay.
One time that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And we did resolve that by allowing extra time for the representative to discuss during the public comments section.
And did we get some clarity about why you decided that they shouldn't be on there? I mean, that's, it's fine if they're not prepared to be on it, it's a waste of your time.
In consultation with the chair, there was no action to be taken. It was more of an informational...
Okay.
So is that not something planning commission does? Do you not provide information? Can someone not come before you and say, "I'd like information on how I should be doing that"?
Getting information from the planning commission?
Yeah. I'm like, "What are your expectations? Like, what are you looking for?"
That should be done at the staff level normally, on most cases.
Okay, this is again where I'm back at the checklist. If I were a brand-new person who was trying to volunteer to do something for the community, and I'm not, this isn't my job, I would want to know, how do I do this?
They have to come in and talk with the staff. It's virtually impossible to have a checklist for every potential situation that may arise. It's gonna be difficult. They're gonna, they're gonna have to, whoever it is is gonna have to come in and say, "This is what I'm wanting to do." And we walk people through, "This is what you gotta have." You know, whether it's a sign from the, or a site plan review, or whatever they're looking at.
So would it, would it be appropriate, then, to put under the bylaws, persons wishing to be out of the agenda should have a consultation with city staff prior to that meeting?
Again, it's not what it says.
These are the bylaws of operation for the, you know, eleven...
Right. We have bylaws for the city council that say we want to be on the agenda. Any person on the council may add something to the agenda. So if a citizen wants to put something on the agenda, they can ask any city council member, and we can put it on the agenda. That's not clear in the planning commission what that process is.
You're not using Robert's Rules of Orders, obviously, to guide your agenda then, because Robert's Rules say anybody can add, any, the committee, your commission can add anything at any time.
They can.
But they can't, well, they can, according to Robert's Rules of Order.
Right.
But that's not what the bylaws say.
But if you're not running that according to that, then maybe that should be indicated as well, because people come in with the expectation, if they know Robert's Rules at all, "Oh, anybody can be on the agenda because that's the way Robert's Rules..."
Well, that's, again, you hit it if they understand Robert's Rules of Order.
Yes.
And that's...
And they may not. You're right. And I think that, you know, some clarity could be achieved here if we just put something in the bylaws, and that it's given out to the members so that they don't make accusations like, "Well, yeah, you're gonna be on the agenda next month," and then people are disappointed because it didn't happen. If there's a very, you know, precise order of things, to meet with you, to meet with Craig, or whoever the chair is, or whoever it is that they should meet with, make it very clear for anybody that wants to be on the agenda, here's what you do.
You need to do this prior to...
Ms. Nixon, do you have a comment?
Well, it's, it's just that, I don't disagree that you would want someone to be prepared prior to going and being on the agenda. I think that it's very reasonable, that's a case-by-case thing, and you just need to, you know, substance out in advance. But if nowhere in there does it say that, "Hey, you need to come talk to us in advance, and then we'll work out what you need so we can get you on the agenda," it's not fair to expect them to understand something that no one told them. That's, that's an unrealistic expectation. So if that's the expectation, we just need to put it in writing.
So is there a particular point that you would suggest is be added, and what specific language are you interested in?
Oh, where is that?
I mean, it may be just as simple as a statement that the planning commission follows Robert's Rules of Order, period. You know, the planning commission, yeah, it could be right up in the, right up in the book. Where...
Above officers.
Yeah. And there is a bunch of officers.
But that would suggest that then they don't have to be prepared.
Yeah, that's...
If you're doing Robert's Rules, they get to come in and they get to talk.
We can't have both. Okay. We need to decide what direction we're gonna head on this. Either we, it's probably a good idea to tell, to run the meeting by Robert's Rules, which it is kind of now unofficially. You know, if we would basically put a plug in there that says, "The meeting will be run by Robert's Rules of Orders," well, then probably we would have to add a, another paragraph or a line that checklist possibly, this is what I'm hearing from everybody, that a checklist will possibly be handed to the persons requesting to be on the agenda, that they must meet the criteria on the checklist to be able to be heard for a decision from the planning commission. But then we go back to, I guess I'm saying, if they want to be, just speak to the planning commission, how would we address that? Well, we've addressed it before, is under the public comments.
Sure.
With some leeway, if it's gonna take more than four minutes. There's the...
But then at that point, it's at the discretion of the chair. If they want to give them more than four minutes.
Wouldn't that, and that have, since I've been here, there's not been a problem?
I understand that, but it's still not a universal policy to discuss with the chair.
Well, I don't know how you get away from discretion. I mean, that's, the chair has the discretion. My concern with this, with a checklist, is that I, I don't know how we would develop a checklist or checklists that are going to cover all conceivable situations. And I think it would be just kind of, you know, an exercise that is not gonna give us the work we want.
Under item E in the bylaws, where it says, "Agenda."
Yep.
Where is the, I can't see.
It is on page 101 of the packet. So where it says, "Agenda," currently it reads, "The city clerk shall be responsible for preparing agenda for planning commission meetings, the order of business, da-da-da-da-da." I think that this could be a very simple resolution of the city clerk shall be responsible for preparing an agenda. Persons wishing to be on the agenda must meet with the city clerk, or city manager, or insert city employee there, whoever that needs to be, to ensure they're prepared. I feel like that's a very simple fix. It puts it out there in black and white. It doesn't really require a whole bunch of paperwork.
We should come up with some suggested language.
Sure.
The best thing to do is refer it back to the planning commission for revision.
Sure.
Okay. Let's, this is speed up. Let's put something together. Your statement was very good, we'll submit it. And let's go back to the planning commission chair, and let him review it, planning commission. And if they see it's unfit, we'll amend it, and then they'll send it back up. Can you hear? Does that sound reasonable, Mr. Hopkins? I know you were there, we've discussed that briefly, it's not a law. Everybody agrees to that? Good sense of... Okay. Sounds good. That should cover our, if you find your...
Item B. But it's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion on item B? Okay, we'll send that back to the planning commission, even though this is first consideration. Item E, motion to approve ordinance number 90. And ordinance, I'm not gonna read, and ordinance to amend article of a planned unit development for the downtown district here. Mr. Manager, would you wish to speak to that? I think everybody read it. And this is an exercise that the planning commission went through. It was a multi-month process to talk about a planned unit development. We laid things out on the table to see how we would like to see the downtown area evolve. A lot of thought went into it, and that the, really, the whole theory about it was to set a planned unit development up for the downtown district with some guidelines, some general guidelines, that then we could hand to business owners that if they want to do something to their building, here's some guidelines, or they want to build a new building downtown, they have that. And the thought being that it gives the planning commission a little bit more latitude to make things work, or work. The thing that really precipitated this, again, I come back to the Cedar Springs Brewery Company. Right now, our ordinance says, "I think you can only have three flags." They came back, they had a plan, and I don't remember the number of flags across, but it was many more than three. But it looked good, and it worked, and the consensus was of the planning commission that something would be very appealing and attractive. So we, it took us quite a while to come up with a different name for those. So we, it took us quite a while to come up with a different name for those, that was not a flag or a banner.
What are they called?
Nerd flags.
Oh, I'm impressed.
Agreed.
Thank Google for that.
So, you know, that kind of was the impetus for doing something like that, to say, you know, we're probably gonna see some changes in the downtown area, we need some latitude to work with the property owners, because it's sometimes too big, so that's what the intent is.
Okay. I would need a motion to approve ordinance number nine, ordinance, ordinances amending article nine, plan unit development section forty-five ninety-eight, opposed forty-five ninety-nine. Principal permit use forty-sixty, special land use forty-sixty-one, qualifying conditions forty-sixty-two. Applications and review and process preliminary P U D site plan and final P U D site plan in addition, section forty-six-oh-two, preliminary P U D site plan submission requirements forty-six-oh-three, standards for approval of preliminary P U D site plan forty-sixty-five, final P U D submitting requirements forty-six-oh-six, standards for approval of final site plan of forty-six-oh-three. This is the amendment will be approved, the final P U D site plan of forty-sixty-two, appeals venues as first reading.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance you just read.
I am reading again. Senator Support.
Just seconded it up.
Mr. Clark, is there any discussion?
Yes.
So, it looks like the process for getting the P U D approved is, is it lengthy? How much time would you estimate it would take someone like the Cedar Spring Brewing Company to get their site plan and whatever other documentation they have to have approved for the P U D?
It shouldn't be any longer than.
It's been about three or four meetings.
Three or four meetings?
Three and a half months. You know, and the thing is, is what we're trying to do is, number one, be flexible, number two, minimize the number of appeals.
To the zoning.
To the zoning board of appeals. So if the planning commission says, no, this doesn't meet our, you know, the zoning, accident is downtown P U D, the only recourse for the applicant is to file an appeal with the zoning board of appeals, which is costly, another meeting, and it may or may not happen. So, this provides some flexibility, it certainly won't take any longer than a month of site planning. You're submitting the same site plan, and the underlying zoning is there, but we just have some different, you know, some guidelines.
Based on the structure of P U D, they already exist.
Right. Yes, and that gives the planning commission a little more leeway to be able to prove the site plan. It sounds like a great curve.
Yeah.
Get around the, uh, however.
Stream one.
Bureaucracy?
Stream one.
And be able to do some new things.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, I call for roll call votes, ordinance number one oh nine.
This first, first reading.
Mr. Clark.
Do we need to have a vote? Not on the first reading.
Yeah.
I thought we had a motion, because here a motion to approve.
We did have a motion.
First reading.
It's technically not necessary, because it is just the first reading, first presentation, and then we come back at the next meeting for the second reading and adoption.
We have a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded, with the maker of the motion, Mr. Hopkins, and the sessioner, Mr. Clark, withdraw your motion.
I'll move my second.
Turn over my original.
Thank you. Moving along, to item S, motion to approve ordinance number one ninety-one, and ordinance to amend section ten-one of the charter, ten, article one of the city code of the city of Cedar Springs as first reading. Now, do we need a motion on that, or do we know this is the first reading?
This is what the discussion was. Basically, the problem that exists is our current ordinance talks about compliance with zoning, housing, health, and health construction and other codes required. At the end of it, it says, currently, however, this section shall not apply to mobile homes placed in properly licensed mobile home parks. That's not correct, it's not compliant with state law, nor is it in concert with the Department of Licensing and regular appears as it pertains to mobile home parks. So, he asked the city attorney to come up with some language that would make us in compliance, and so what he's suggesting is in section B, the new language would read, this section shall not apply to mobile homes placed in properly licensed mobile home parks, provided, however, that all ordinances, codes, or regulations otherwise applicable to mobile home parks or mobile homes within mobile home parks, including but not limited to the provisions of zoning warnings, construction codes, property maintenance codes, and health codes, shall apply to mobile home parks and mobile homes within mobile home parks to the fullest extent permitted by law. So that brings us in compliance. So that would be the first reading.
Okay.
Mr. Clark. I'm confused. But that's not unusual, as my wife. All right, so if we're dealing with a mobile home, an approved mobile home park, now do they have to have the foundations that we're talking about for a regular house under those now?
They, you have to, they have their own set of guidelines and standards, and they just have to conform with them.
Those, that would be for an approved mobile home, a licensed mobile home park.
Right.
Oh, mobile homes in the mobile home park.
Okay, very good.
That's the difference.
Yeah.
Well, it looked like, when I read that, it was confusing to me, because that very first list, okay, I can see why that's true, why that's true, and then all of a sudden we're dealing with foundations and, you know, some kind of way to tie the mobile home, it sounded like, down to the foundation, wait, that can't be.
Yeah, because they're mobile, they move them in and out. Basically, basically noting that there are differences between conventional sit-built homes and mobile homes.
Okay.
And they have their own guidelines, so it's saying that they're based on their own merits of their own code.
So what is the, what is the state law, was there a change in the state law that's bringing this to our attention, or just that we haven't paid attention to it before?
I don't know, this just came to our attention, and we changed it.
So.
We currently just aren't in compliance.
But I'm still, I'm still, what part aren't we in compliance with? Had we not been making the mobile home parks follow their own rules?
No.
No?
It's just that there's confusion exists, because our ordinance says something in conflict with the state law, so we're bringing in compliance with the state law.
And what is that, what is that difference?
They're saying mobile homes are excluded from having to meet the requirements.
To meet what?
State requirements.
Right.
Which state requirements?
For mobile homes.
For mobile homes.
Okay.
That's what I wanted.
Just sort of common.
Process.
What's that ordinance say?
It's right here, I just read it, it said, however, this section shall not apply to mobile homes placed in properly licensed mobile home parks.
That's what I was saying, is not, yes.
So we're suggesting new language to bring it in line with state law.
Which says that they have to follow this.
They follow their guideline.
Their guideline.
Okay, excellent.
Excellent.
We're basically acknowledging the mobile home parks rules, and we have our rules for, like, the vacant lot, there's specific standards they have to apply by, and they also have to apply by the mobile homes construction standard.
What if a mobile home is placed, oh, no, they can't do it in Cedar Springs, but, so we, I guess that moves me.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, if I can see it.
Yeah.
Hearing none. We're moving on, that was a discussion only. We'll move on to item G, motion to waive policy number nine to act on the purchase of a biochem oxygen demand V O D incubator for the wastewater treatment plant as first consideration.
Okay. I will make a motion to waive policy number twelve to act on the purchase of a biochemical oxygen demand or V O D incubator for the wastewater treatment plant on its first consideration.
Okay, all those in favor waiving policy number twelve for the purchase of a V O D incubator? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Hearing none. The policy to waive, I will entertain a motion to approve the bid for a V O D incubator for the wastewater treatment plant lab from North Central Labs in the amount not to exceed three thousand seven hundred and eight dollars.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. This says that this is first consideration. Now, isn't that in conflict with having a motion? Could this be?
That's why we waive policy twelve, to be able to do it on the first.
So why is it still this first consideration?
Because it is, we're voting on it on first consideration.
They want a purchase of, we want a wastewater treatment. I'll say on the call.
We waive policy and pause, so we vote on it on first consideration.
Okay. Okay. I will entertain a motion for the purchase of the V O D incubator.
Show move.
Second.
I try not to be as long-winded as my fire department counterpart. Basically, this is a piece of lab equipment that's been at the plant for, since it's been built, it's in failing condition, and it's no longer a viable piece of equipment and needs to be replaced.
It's a warming oven. Any other?
Do you put your cinnamon rolls?
Yeah, you did. No, we don't in that one. You might have a fall taste.
No question, I discuss your judgment account.
Thank you.
One hundred percent.
Any other discussion?
Put your cinnamon on the.
Okay, moving on. I have a roll call vote, because it pertains to money. Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale.
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes, motion carries. We don't want nothing but slur dinner, sorry. But, moving on, item H, motion to waive policy number twelve to act on a SCADA bid as first consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to waive policy twelve to act on the SCADA bid at first consideration.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor waiving policy number twelve to act on the purchase of a SCADA system? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the bid from Windermiller to upgrade the city's SCADA system in the amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to approve the bid from Windermiller to upgrade the city's SCADA water system in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Seconded by Mr. Hopkins. Mrs. Johnson.
I think everybody here's been filled in about what it is and why we need it, if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Yes, I was curious about the printing capability, that was important, and that was a, that's required by whom?
The printing capability?
Yeah, it says that that is why you went with the next step up in price, because the lowest price when.
That was because of the reporting capability. That was because of the reporting capability.
Reporting, not printing?
Correct.
Okay, and that required, that's required because?
If you're not familiar with the SCADA, how the SCADA system works, or what we need to do for the D E Q, I can explain it to you, but.
Well, we haven't had that in our system, obviously, up until now, so I'm.
We've had a SCADA system in the system, but it's been pretty well antiquated. All of the information that comes from the wells on a daily basis has to be manually inputted into the reporting system for the D E Q, and this will actually download, hopefully we can set it up to do that, directly enter the report each day, so I don't have to spend one day out of my month downloading and entering those numbers into the report. If you've seen my report, you see the report that I have to send to the D E Q.
Yeah.
That takes me about a day to compile every month.
And this, do that.
This is just take it off of the computer and put it where it needs to go?
Well, hopefully.
We know how computers work.
Yeah, the D E Q is now upgrading their reporting systems to what's called My Water, and I'll get into that, because it's gonna be very, very difficult, very complicated, and very expensive for the people that are involved.
The state's continually streamlining their abilities to collect data, and unfortunately, the water systems have to keep up. Any other discussion on this?
What I remember about the SCADA is how the wells tell each other when to turn on and turn off, and very important stuff. Here's a question.
Yeah, the water system does not run without the SCADA system. That's what controls the entire, entire system. One well will come on, fill the tower up, the tower will tell that well that it's full and shut it off, the SCADA system switches it to the next well. Once it gets down to a certain point, it tells that well to come on and shut off when it gets to a certain point, and the SCADA system switches it to the next well. Now, something, if there's an anomaly that happens at the wells, the SCADA system calls on an alarm, which it's doing quite often, and I have to pay one of my people two hours overtime to actually go and physically check the SCADA system, where now the new system, you can check it, will be able to check it by either a phone, or a tablet, or a computer at my desk.
Sounds good to me.
And all of the data, it will have its own separate computer. There's actually a chart, physical chart, in the wells, it has to be switched once a month, that we've never used the data in the twenty-six years that I've been here. But all that information will get downloaded into that computer and stored into their computer if we ever need it.
So I saw the writing there, that it does talk about the other system can only do screen printing.
Correct.
That's where I got the term printing. So, the necessary ability of the system that we need does what beyond screen printing? It will send back what's on the screen to another location. That's what I'm hearing?
No, I think I explained it, if you weren't listening, it was.
I was listening, and I'm still understanding what the difference between only screen printing.
Screen printing means you can print the screen that you're looking at, and that's it.
And it can't do what that you want it to do?
It cannot download the information from the SCADA system to the well reporter, or the reporting forms for the D E Q on a daily basis.
So it can't print it from the screen to the.
It has nothing to do with printing. It's a downloading process.
Downloading.
Turning data.
But it's downloading it to where?
To my computer.
To your, see, that's what I said, to the.
I thought it was going directly to the D E Q.
Why is that so?
No, it goes directly, everything that goes to the D E Q, and I mean, everything needs my approval before it goes.
Got it. Okay. Because I thought you were saying this would send it directly, so you wouldn't even have to do that.
No.
All right, so it goes to your computer, and you're able to put it right on the forms?
Sure.
Yay.
Okay.
That's great.
And that's quite to the point of. There it is.
We're getting close.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Nixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Conlin.
Yes.
Mrs. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yes.
Mr. Truesdale.
Yes.
Mr. Hall votes yes, motion carries.
And Mr. Mayor, if you will indulge me for a second, I'll fill you on a couple of things that happened this month, so I don't have to come back up here during the D P W report, that's okay.
Hope you like it. It's exciting.
Yeah, but I'm getting old in my backyard, I'm tired of being here till six forty-five this morning. this morning. But, anyway, two, uh, two, uh, two things happened, uh, one's a bad one, one's a good one. Um, the treatment plant during the storm to hit, um, cost over six thousand dollars worth of damage to their handling system. The good news is I got, uh, the insurance company to cover it, it's gonna cost us two hundred and fifty dollar deductible.
Wow.
It is already repaired and, uh, up and running because we cannot have a system down and have a lab at eighty degrees, it just doesn't work that way. Uh, the other thing that, uh, that's notable is when, uh, deans put the, uh, the well points into the Water Cherry Street, um, the flows at the treatment plant went down an average of one hundred fifty to two hundred thousand gallons a day.
Incredible.
Wow.
We are now treating almost the same amount of water that we produce.
Wow.
Hope it stays there.
Any else? Well, I think the council needs to realize that when they put the SCADA system in, it's gonna close up all the leaks, and they're gonna go into the basements, the surrounding homes.
We had that happen.
We had that happen on Elster, or like, so, beware.
That's a good thing. Okay, water tank, water tank was coming up.
Oh, it will. Okay, um, I think it's, you know, when we, when we... Okay, at this time, we're at item I, a discussion of the fire barn move.
Okay.
This is coming.
Well, this is mine. Um, having read the planning commission, um, minutes, and seeing that we are in the process of serving hooray, hooray, to get a new library, and having, I think, other than maybe, um, the mayor, the longest history of anybody on the council regarding this whole thing, having to do with council, and having been on the library board for six years, I know that one of the things, this is an action that's gonna have to happen through council, is the fire barn is going to need to move. And we need to have a conversation about where is that gonna go, and what is that gonna look like? We're probably gonna have a lot of conversations about that. So, I just would like to put it on the table to start the conversation, because the library can do all kinds of amazing things, but it cannot decide where a fire barn should go. That kinda has to be us. So, Mr. Mayor, may I ask, um, Mr. Maybe for a little bit of input, being that he was previously come to council with a very generous offer for building a fire barn, and having spoken with him, I know that that offer is still on the table, could I have him speak to that that's confirmed as part of our conversation? Is that okay with you?
Okay, um, we just, okay, sure, we don't wanna end up with a lengthy conversation.
No, but just to confirm, Mr. Maybe, there's some money on the table to move a fire barn?
Could you guys start it off? Um, just, you know, you have a good voice.
You understand. A little over two years ago, uh, when this all started, we started having conversations and dialogue about what's gonna be happening in Cedar Springs, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the things that came up was a lot, it was a, was a fire barn. We started having conversations with Marty, Jeff Gus, or with the thing, the box, or with the things, and at that point in time, there was, at that point in time, where we could build the facility for a hundred and thirty thousand, we had money given to us. We're still selling it on that money. At this point in time, uh, that has things, you know, there's been things going on, with studies between Solon Township and Cedar Springs, our group, our officers said, well, what should we do? Well, we always should have two plans, and so, we had people continue, Jeff Gus and Gale Larson continued on, and had conversations like we did with Marty, what it needs the fire barn, because the fire barn can't house all the stuff that it has at this point in time. And so, they've got a conversation and dialogue, our group has, they've just been holding back, and Gale Larson had a sketch floor plan drawn up about what that would look like, sound like, yada, yada, yada. But what have we been doing with it? Well, we've been sitting on it so that if Solon Township and Cedar Springs doesn't go that way, well, then we're not waiting for how long to have this here on the answer, so, we've got the information that we've had for several months now.
But say, verify there is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on the table to build a fire barn?
Our, our officers agree that we'll pull that offer, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have a question. So...
This is discussion only, so we will not be making any decisions, this is just to bring in the...
Right, of course, certainly.
Continue.
Uh, so, one of the barriers that was mentioned is a, is a study that's going on with Solon and Cedar Springs. Uh, so if we were to move the fire barn, is there a threshold of if we move it more than, say, a mile in one direction or the other, will it affect those, those borders? I guess I, I don't understand, I, I happen to believe if we moved it across the street, it wouldn't, not that we're going to, but if we did, it wouldn't affect the study much. I just wonder what that threshold is.
Mr. Mayor, may I follow on this? Follow me, you and your chief man, then come...
Yeah, the, the first thing, the, the study is not a barrier.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no composure outcome, so we don't know what it's going to say. And we don't know what the recommendations are, may or may not be. And I would just call actually council, but we don't wanna get ahead of it, because they might say, you know, whatever they might say, uh, uh, ends up with the fire barn staying right where it's at, and not being moved. Or, they may even say, because of this, you know, if you're looking at something, here's an idea of maybe if you're gonna move your barn, it should be over here, whatever. So, I think we need to wait and see the results of that study before we go too far.
Well, it is better.
Yeah, we don't know the answer.
We don't, we don't know the answer. Um, you know, in, in, in terms of locating the fire barn, fire department, we've gotta be some consideration taken into the service area, and that may change based on this, uh, this study, uh, so we, we have to put some thought into what's taking the best location for a new fire barn, given our, our, our service area, because as council knows, we cover roughly one third of Nelson Township. So, you know, we go to the east, as well as the west, and where's the best place? The other thing, too, we had discussions, and I'm glad you brought it up about the study, you know, we need to consider that. Um, the, the last time I talked to, uh, Jeff Gus, and it was just a passing comment, he thought it was going to take a minimum of four hundred thousand dollars to build a fire barn that needs colors. Okay, so, you know, the generous officer, a hundred and thirty's certainly appreciated, but if it's going to be something like that, and it's just a first guess of it, the city would have to come up with, you know, several hundred thousand dollars more to stand that, you know, where's it gonna be probably relocated, so we got, I don't mind having the discussion, but we gotta get all these things out there, to think about.
Sure. Why we have to have this conversation?
Well, if I, I may, I'm, I'm back at, if we were to move the fire barn two blocks in any direction, is, is that distance enough to, to really affect the outcome of the study? Or is there going to be, like, I can certainly see if we move it five miles in one direction, then of course that would, that would affect things. Um, so I guess, I'm, I'm just looking for that threshold of we could move it five blocks.
I don't know, because I don't know of the study. You know, there's all kinds of possible outcomes in the study, one of them could be that the consultant might recommend, why don't we have a fire district that encompasses Solon Township, the city, and Nelson Township, proportions thereof? Well, that, you know, if that's the thing, then that certainly is driving where we locate that fire department, and then, if that was an outcome, five blocks may not be far enough. See where I'm coming from? So, there's, there's just a lot of possible outcomes that we can't foresee. It could be as simple as, you know, as we're just gonna do some training together, maybe we're gonna tweak up our service areas to, maybe we're gonna have a new entity and have a fire district, I don't know, that might be a recommendation, but I, I, I would be very hesitant to recommend to council that they move forward until we get that study, okay, so we can digest.
And what is the, the projected end date?
November, December.
Okay, so not terribly far out in the future?
No, no, he thought by the end of year, probably.
Okay.
Basically, what I see here is our first discussion or decision will have to be whether we, um, accept this agreement in whatever you wanna call it, cohabitate with Solon or any of the identity townships that we serve.